It is six thirty, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, is there anyone here for the two-minute open forum? Yes, sir. Yeah, you're up.
Mayor and council members, thank you for having me tonight. I'm Adam Wicklund, I'm the president of the Metro Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. I'd just like to recognize the White Park PD for the great outstanding job they do in the support of the Citizens Academy every fall. They offer a lot of officer time and resources to the academy, and I think it's a great opportunity for citizens to do. And this year we had a fundraiser, and White Park PD is our, basically where we're donating our money this year. So I'm here to present a check to Chief Menjood for a thousand dollars.
Oh, great, thank you. Thank you. That goes in the mayor's fund, chief. Anyone else, two-minute open forum.
I would like to address the issue of the zoning.
Ma'am, can I give you your name and my, your name and address?
I'm Carolyn Foged, and I'm at nineteen Eleventh Avenue North, White Park.
Thank you.
And I'd really like to address the idea, the concept of zoning and buffering between my house and the Ultimate Sports Bar. I have photos and names of, signatures actually, of adjoining neighborhood people that agree with me on this. There is no buffering between my house and the parking lot. I have breathing problems, it's nothing but dust all the time. I have cars parking five feet away from my bedroom window. I also, I believe they are over the property line where they put their gravel. They have, and I believe they did that deliberately, there was a entire roll of lilacs on their side of my small privacy fence, which is set back from the property line by nine inches. They took out all of, all of the foliage. I hear nothing but traffic and cars. Now, that's not even addressing the typical evening bar language. During the day, I hear nothing but cars. They, I can hear their doors closing, I can hear when they use a fob to open them going beep 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 beep. The lights flash. And I haven't slept since that house burned. I have no buffer, nothing. If you'd like to see the photos, I'll be happy to leave them. I know that they don't intend to do anything else because they went all the way up to my fence with their gravel, and then they posted signs on my fence. I have photos of that, and I also have a police report of that. So, I need some help here, guys.
All right, why don't you, why don't you give that information to the second man there, John Norenberg, the Jay Norenberg? And I think, I think, John, you're working with that now anyway, so, I, there will be, I think, and Tom's here too. There, there will be a buffer there, and, and any parking lot has to be blacktopped or hard-surfaced, so that dust problem should go away, so.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
John?
Typically, typically, we require that the hard-surfacing be accomplished immediately, but in the past, we've made accommodations to allow for some settling within a reasonable timeframe of a couple months.
No, we can't, I tried, I tried to.
For commercial-type projects. We did send information to the owner of the Ultimate, Mr. Freericks, either early last week or late the previous week regarding a plan for, not only the landscape buffering, the transition between commercial and residential property, where you have that kind of conflict. We do require a landscape buffer, I believe it's gotta be fifteen feet wide, and combination, either some, some screening through fencing, plantings, or some combination thereof. Right now, we're basically waiting on a, a plan from the owner to outline his proposal, how he's gonna achieve that, as well as anything else he's looking at accomplishing potentially with that area, just so we're all kinda working together.
Okay.
In that, we recommend recording with the neighbors.
Yeah, I don't wanna get off on a whole, whole subject, but it, it's, it's being addressed, it is being addressed. Tom's aware of it, Tom knows this, and he'll make it right, I'm sure he'll make it right, and I'm not saying it's gonna be done tomorrow, but it should be done. Oops, I just turned my computer off, but, but, well, yeah, you can hope. The sooner the better, right?
Please, please.
Yeah, and we'll work with it, John will work with Tom, and, and, and we'll, we'll try to get that as soon as we can. All right?
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else, two minutes?
Yeah, my name's Neil Johnson, I work, I live at Eleventh Avenue North, in White Park, so I'm right across the street from the Ultimate. And Tom and I have had conversations about kinda what his plans are, but I do support my neighbors that we do need some buffer on the north side, and also part of the east side, too. Because right now, you know, I'm sitting in my front yard, and I see parking and, and stuff like that, so. And then the garbage and, and things like that, but, you know, I think if you guys are working on it, I think, you know, I, I would expect the city to, to make sure everything, all the zoning laws are enforced and any, any other things, you know, that are in the books, so.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure I, I support my neighbor, too.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Patricia Aikmeyer, twenty Twelfth Avenue North. A few years back here, Tommy took down a house next door to me. And I gave him the variance to put up his parking lot and do his thing. And I was promised a lot of things that did not occur. For one, he did put up the fence, put it up the wrong direction, had to add to it. And I was promised a sound barrier, like shrubbery, whatever. He did plant those initially, and then they were chopped to two-foot heights, and the whole wall is now used for a display board of advertisement and whatever. People have driven almost through the fence into my yard. A couple of times, Tom's had to repair that fence because people just slam right into it, even though there's five, seven feet of easement there, I guess, to the fence. But, in support of Jen and her mom, what they've gone through in the last couple of weeks is just ridiculous, and it should've been addressed prior to this going on. We shouldn't have had to all of a sudden see this house go down and nothing taken care of until after the fact.
Okay, we can work, I, I think we'll, we'll work that whole situation out, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else, two-minute open forum?
Good evening, my name is Peter Wilson, I live in eleven zero eight Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota. Couple of brief things here, one is an ongoing update of the infection, election irregularities that occurred here. It's still being, there's no final answer yet. I know there is some initial comments from the Stearns County Sheriff's Department. Again, just giving a quick update, it's still in process. I wanted to mention a couple of things, sitting in back over here, there was a talk about the open forum. A forum is a discussion of, if I can read it from you, from a dictionary or some definitions, provides a forum for people, a meeting place for open discussion. What the lady did right here was open discussion, and that was quite good. That's the concept. Everything else is just coming up here in complaining, whining, explaining, or thanking people, which is fine, but it's not a forum. And the intent, potentially, of some members here who may be for putting this behind open or closed doors, so instead of it being above the counter, it goes below the counter. I also wanted to talk about this thing, this, I just presented this. I'm just starting to look into some of the ethics clauses that are in some of the individuals' professional designations. Shawna, this is one of yours, I think. Again, I'm gonna be looking at these. I question whether you comply with those three things I've under, underlined, and hopefully, going forward, you will be able to. But should those actions be taken, which were discussed, I question it. I reserve the right, and have the right, to make a formal complaint to attempt to remove your professional designation. I may not be successful, it's probably unlikely that I will. The important thing being, if you get one, read it and follow it. Another thing I wanna talk about is some of the conversations that happened earlier, and, and this is in regards to the 5G thing. I think that the absence of looking into this is, is only started, there's again, many cities where this has been halted, been revised, places where it's been removed, and the failure to look at this upfront will dictate problems potentially on the backside. Again, I would recommend you review your own ethics designations. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Gary Margenroth, eleven twenty-five Cherrywood Court. Yeah, I witnessed that, too. There's been emails going around, and I've been getting messages from not only White Park, but St. Cloud, Sartell, South Rapids, St. Joe. And I'm, my issues, and Peter talked on it a little bit, on the 5G. And the message I get back is, well, that's the FCC, we can't do anything about it. Not once, not once, guys, did I ever mention the FCC when I asked about this health report. I'm asking for you people, as elected people, responsible, and hired people by the city, employees in other words, to do this report to the public, because that's your job, to look out for the public and give them the facts, not shove it under the table like this. It's really disgusting, it really, really, truly is. And I get emails, like, the city council and the mayor and the administrator make all the decisions on what goes on around here. The public is the public, it's the public that voted you people in. I don't know who hired the hired people here, but I know that the elected people were elected by the people. And when you start slamming the door in the people's face, you got a problem. My last comment is this, how many of you took the thirty pieces of silver? There was somebody that did that two thousand years ago, read the book, and you'll find out what he did after he took it. Thank you.
Oh, don't forget your paper, are you leaving that?
Uh, these copies, Rick, there's three of them here.
Okay, you're leaving those?
I wanted to make sure that you guys had three, you can make more copies, but this is, is how 5G and MF radiation impact your health.
Okay.
It's a starter for you guys to do your report to the public, please, I mean this, I really mean this.
I didn't know if you had forgot them or you're leaving them, okay.
No, this is a matter of life or death, lady, or not, this is worse than refugee settlement.
All right.
Because this holds, this, this is hold, has no endings, it's not racist.
Thank you. All right, reviewing, oh, anybody else for two-minute open forum? Almost forgot you.
Hi, Andrea Danielson, eleven oh four First Street North. I have concerns about the rerouting of the construction and some of the metro buses that are coming up First Street North. Typically, they would come, Tom, help me out, Eleventh Avenue. But now with the construction rerouting, they are zipping up so fast on that First Street North. I wouldn't have a problem with it if it wasn't how fast they're coming, there's a lot of kids that live on that road, mine included. I'm worried about when school is let out and more kids being there, so just that rate of how those buses are rerouting up that street, so.
We, we can call MTC and, and just tell them to watch your speed on that?
They're getting faster, and so that would be.
You know, sometimes they look faster than they are, but.
And that is true, that is true, and there is.
That's okay, it doesn't hurt to remind them.
We live, you know, I know they're increasing as they go up the hill. It just feels really fast from a long perspective, so.
We can, we can give them a call and tell them to just watch your speeds.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anybody else?
Could do some traffic control.
Anyone else, two minutes? All right, review and approve council agenda.
I'd like to add two items. Under consent agenda, 5G, I would like to add the hiring of utility, utility operator promotion for Shane Barkley to move him from a grade six, step two.
Two, I, grade six, step two.
Step two, grade six. As a utility operator.
As utility operator.
From a maintenance worker.
Five K, I would like to add a donation to the Relay for Life out of our charitable gambling fund, which is part of the American Cancer Society of five hundred dollars.
All right, anything else? What do you want to move to approve, the amended?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, consent agenda items. Item A, approved four-one nineteen council minutes. Item B, approved four-eight council special minutes. Item C, approved four-eight Board of Appeal and Equalization minutes. Item D, purchased Dell laptop, laptop computers. Item E, purchased Axion In Squad mobile cameras. Item F, approved liquor license amendment, Silverleaf Lodging Group. Item G, approved temporary liquor license and fee waiver for Family Fun Fest. Item H, approved seasonal hire position appointments. Item I, approved resolution for Stearns County proposed traffic signal improvements. Item J, approved upgrade to, from maintenance operator to utility operator. And item K, approve a five hundred dollar donation for Relay to Life.
I'd like to pull. Aye.
I'd like to pull G.
C?
G.
G.
Oh, G, okay.
So I will move to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, H, J, and K.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, Ken?
Okay, I, I just basically, I, I wanna abstain from the vote for the Family Fun Fest.
Okay, all right, somebody wanna move to approve that?
So move.
A second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, an abstention?
Yes.
All right, and I, Mike or Frank?
There wasn't much information in there, so I'm kinda not.
That's, that's my problem with this grant is, watching what happened down in the metro when they installed these types of cameras, it seems that we're gonna have to have a full-time person that's going to have to take these tapes on a daily basis. From what I understand, it's kind of a signal that watches the intersections where there are problems, and then we have to send tickets to these individuals, spend more court time trying to prove that this person was driving the vehicle, and I, you know, it's good that they can get it for nothing, it's under a grant program, but sometimes these grant progr, uh, programs create more of a problem for a smaller local community than it does good. No, that's just my.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is not a video camera system, this is a, a blue light system. So basically, what it means, and what still needs to happen, is that, you know, let's say we had an intersection that we were getting a lot of complaints about red light running, or people pushing the red lights. An officer could sit a distance from the intersection, I'll just, I'll just pick on Tenth Avenue and Division here. They could maybe, an officer could maybe sit down, let's say by the Ultimate, they could look to the left, see the intersection, and they could see vehicle traffic moving. And if that blue light go, turns on, it's synced to the red light. So if the blue light comes on, that means there's a red light for that westbound traffic, let's say. So, the officer sees that blue light, they see a vehicle drive through after that blue light turns on, that would be a red light violation. The vehicles continues westbound, and then the officer would be in a position to make a traffic stop for that red light violation. So it's not a, it's not a video camera system, it's just a, simply a way for an officer to take enforcement action at an intersection. In, in, in metro areas like ours, most of our crashes are, are intersection-related. So this is a tool for us to be able to take enforcement action on some of the red light running that's taking place at various intersections. Now, in this case, the, the grant is, is any roadways that, or any intersections that involve a county road, that's where those blue lights will be installed. So it's not a matter of monitoring video or cameras or mailing citations or anything like that.
So, the blue light is mounted on the opposite side of what I would see if I were driving to the intersection?
Well, what we did, after the county informed us that they had gotten this grant, is, is we went out and, with some of their installers, then, and looked at locations where those blue lights could be positioned. Most of them will probably be on the, I don't know, the, the, the post itself. In some cases, they might be on the overhead, possibly.
Yeah.
There's a name for it, it escapes me right now. But we looked at some intersections where, A, the, the light could be installed that's visible to an officer. There's still, there's a location where the officer could still see the intersection, so could see cars moving through that intersection, they'd see the blue light come on, and then, you know, be in a position to take enforcement action, or to stop that vehicle. And because of the, it's, it's really problematic when, you know, as an officer sitting at the intersection at a stop sign, and you wanna turn on a red light violator, you, you create safety risks, issues, not only for the officer and their squad, but also other motorists. So this is a way to take, which, and I would submit to you that red light violations is a significant problem. It's probably number, the number, one of the number-one traffic complaints that I get, and so, and I think we've all experienced it probably personally. So this would be a way for us to be able to take enforcement action and do it in a more safer, in a much safer way. There have been some disputes, you know, individuals that have gotten citations based on the blue light that have been challenged, and, and so far, the judges seem to, once they understand that the fact that the blue light is synced to the red, and they, they, that was one of the questions that I had, are these tickets gonna be dismissed? But they, they accept the, the synchronization, if you will, between the blue and the red, and, and so it's relatively inexpensive traffic solution. But again, it's not a, not a video system, it's not a camera system, it's not electronic citations or anything like that.
How long would this go on for, is this, is this for eternity, or is this a time limit on it?
No, they, as long as they work and, you know, they maintain, they could go on indefinitely.
So the grant is just to put them in?
Correct, it's installed, and it's, it's no cost to the city.
Yep.
And it's, I think, it, it's not every semi-four that we have, it's only those that impact, are impacted by a county road.
Is the county gonna maintain the cam, or the lights in?
Yes, yes. And, you know, and if, well, I guess we'll see how it goes, and if we, if it's, and like I said, it's not hugely expensive, there, frankly, there are some other intersections that I wouldn't mind seeing something like this, but we'll see how this works and, and maybe bring it back another time, like I said, they're relatively inexpensive to, to do, so, but.
Has there been any studies done as to the improvement of red light hunters, or runners, with these blue light intersections?
As far as like, repeat offenders or violators?
Well, repeat or, it could help stop other offenders in the future. I mean, when the camera deal came out, I guess it helped a little bit, but it was more cost, the cost of it was just outrageous. Now, does the blue light help to curtail some of the red light hunting?
I.
Is the best word, I guess?
I have not seen a lot of research yet about the blue light specifically. It, it's a relatively new technology that I think has become fairly common in the metro area. This would, so it'd be kinda new for us, I, I am not aware of any research that would tell us that. I, I just think kind of intuitively, and somewhat maybe from my experience, that when enforcement action is taken as a result of the, the blue lights, that the word will spread, and I think it will make a difference down the road. How much, it, it's hard to gauge.
All right, anything else on that?
Well, that was helpful, I'll move to approve item I.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, approved unanimously. All right, I hate to see the Iowa boy sit any longer, it's time for Martin Marietta. John, do you wanna take it, or do you want them to?
Neil is welcomes as they made the trip, I think, that's A-OK.
I was just gonna make him sit there for.
If he wants to give the summation, make it worth their, their mileage.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Neil Grant with Martin Marietta Materials. Would you like my address?
No, that's.
Also with me this evening is our Alden District Vice President, Mark Johnson, and our local plant manager, Tim Kubel. So we've got two requests. First is, we're just simply due for our five-year periodic review of the two conditional use permits, one for North Quarry and one for Rainbow Quarry. And then the second, we've applied for some modifications to the Rainbow CUP. First is to revise the legal descriptions. We've acquired some additional property to the west, we would like to add that into the permit to be used as a buffer. And then also, we've donated some property formally associated with the quarry to the city for the amphitheater project, so we'd like to formally remove that from the conditional use permit. And then the second request, we would like to shift the mining, the ultimate mining footprint about two hundred feet to the west. We're not proposing to mine any more than we were previously, we're not proposing to shift that outside of the existing boundaries and the existing, the boundary of the CUP or the environmental assessment worksheet. But just west, within the existing boundary, same size, and that's it.
All right.
Neil, I'll, I'll just follow that up. Shawna, if you wanna put that map on screen, you can toggle to my station, and we can put it up. It's the same map we've seen before, but at previous work session. The, the planning commission did review this at their April meeting, they did not have any concerns with either the... I'm, I'm on the hard line. The planning commission did not have any issues with the request, we did not receive any public comments. And also the, the periodic review.
There it is, we got it up.
Perfect, thank you. The planning commission didn't receive any, any comments or issues with the periodic review, and the periodic review is for both quarries, and that included the noticing of everybody around. I had one call on it, that was just for clarification purposes, but that was pretty, pretty readily resolved. I don't have any, any concerns with what they're proposing, I think it's pretty straightforward. If, if they do opt to, to get into that newly acquired area, we'll see a, a increase, or a, basically, another separate application in the future. I think the, the five-year review indicates we've not seen any issues, at least that I'm aware of, that would warrant us needing to, to look further at that, and I'd recommend just acknowledging that we've made the review and accepting that.
All right, council, got any questions?
Yeah, in the past, when this quarry was started, there was a, what would you call it, a reclamation plan? Once the quarry becomes non-functional, as to how it's gonna be re-put back in. Is there such a plan for this added acreage here? And if there isn't, I would suggest that there probably be one included in it.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that. So there's a reclamation plan for the mining operation, and at this point, we've simply acquired this property, and it's going to remain undeveloped buffer, so there's really no need for a reclamation plan for an undeveloped buffer. If, however, we do ever choose to develop it in the future, we would have to go through a formal conditional use permit process to bring it in, we'd have to do all the environmental studies, and if it were to be approved as part of that, we would also need to amend the reclamation plan at that time.
Sure, all right, any other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the conditional, amendment to the conditional use permit.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously, and we need a motion that, that we acknowledge that they did their. Opposed, passed unanimously, and we need a motion that uh, that we acknowledge that they did their five-year review.
A motion that they did their five-year review.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Aren't you glad you came from Iowa?
All that ways.
Nice day for it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, gifting of canine Parker.
The uh, uh, untimely resignation of our canine handler, Officer Bigler, uh, her last shift was on Sunday. And we knew that um, she was making a career change. We didn't anticipate the timing of it. Uh, and so it it uh, the it put us in a tough spot. Right now, the police department, uh, as of today, we're down five officer spots, so we're running really short. Um, Parker is an excellent dog. Uh, it's about three and a half years old. And um, recognizing that it's probably gonna take us a year or two to get our staffing levels back up such that we could afford to. Uh, have another canine, um, you know, something we might want to consider down the road with the amphitheater, maybe as a. Uh, a dog with explosive detection capabilities, maybe whatever, but um, my initial thought was to. Possibly find a local handler that could take uh, Parker for a year or maybe two, and we could take the dog back. But after talking with some of the uh, experts that that train canine, they they discouraged me from that, that they thought that was not a good idea. That um, conversely, it was not a good idea or the best plan to give a veteran dog, if you will, to a rookie handler. Uh, there are probably some other agencies that would have liked to have taken Parker. Um, but uh, there they didn't have the experience. It would probably take us um, twelve weeks to get a new handler trained up. But like I said, unfortunately, right now, the timing of that, we just don't have the staff to facilitate that. So. Um, Parker is in the prime of his career right now, and it it just happened that uh, St. Cloud Police Department. Uh, does have a veteran handler in Officer Brian Cameron. Uh, his dog is um, uh, is being retired. Because of arthritis and a and a bad hip. And so. The opportunity to uh, find a home for Parker immediately. The other dilemma that I was in was with Joanna's resignation effective Sunday. I didn't really want to keep uh, our dog in her possession for liability reasons. And um, so and it really wasn't her responsibility anymore. So uh, wanting, feeling a little bit of pressure to find a home for Parker immediately. Uh, I, we were able to uh, to do that. Parker has had an opportunity to to spend a few days now with Brian. They seem to be very compatible. Uh, Brian has trained with Parker uh, in the past, as there's a lot of of joint train, training that goes on between. Uh, what was Wade Park Canine and St. Cloud Canine and and other other jurisdictions that have the dog. So. Um, in in uh, light of that familiarity and the fact that, you know, Wade Park and St. Cloud are in the same school district. Uh, if we needed a dog for, let's say, a locker sniff or something like that, they uh, St. Cloud is PD has been a good partner for us and. Uh, you know, they would make Parker available to us if we needed assistance. So I I think for the um. The benefit of of our agency and for Parker and and just the opportunity to uh, get him or basically keep him in work. Right now, by transferring to St. Cloud, he might be out of service for a matter of a few weeks. If he went anywhere else, he'd be out of service for several months. And for a dog like this at at the prime of his career, that to me just didn't seem like a a a good, good choice. And um, um, so I guess that's my recommendation the to the council is that Parker be gifted to St. Cloud. Uh, and be and so that he can ma- maintain um, his service as a canine. And again, once we get our staffing back up, we'll look at what we want to do. It would be, and like I said, it would be better to um, you know, if we re-establish our program down the road. To do it with a new dog and a new handler as it's coming together as a team, much like what we did with Joanna and Parker, so.
All right.
The the one suggestion that I would make, and we talked about it, but we never got it added, Dave, was to do it for a dollar, just so we have a transaction that 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 transfers that ownership for a dollar. That's typically something that we've done on other things when we've done bloodhounds and things like that. When we've retired them, it's probably appropriate for us to do it in this situation.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Um, as far as, were there other agencies that were notified that had an opportunity to take a look at this?
The sheriff's office was interested and and I talked with Lieutenant Hemisch about it. Um, and um. And what I explained to them, and it it was, they they did not have a a handler. Uh, they did not have a vehicle. I I think it, the opportunity to take Parker on was, it it, there was a window of opportunity uh, for them, and they they were maybe hoping to take advantage of it. Uh, but the um, the reality was, um, while they might have the staffing and could maybe free somebody up to do it. Uh, it was gonna take several months before they were ready. They didn't have, they didn't have a kennel, and they, so they were just kind of a spur of the moment. They heard Parker might be available. They they called and it just um, it looking at it. It, St. Cloud seemed to be the best option to keep Parker working and uh.
So then when, you know, we do this dollar and we we make an agreement, in that agreement, does it talk about? Um, are us being able to get the dog back for our use?
You know, it, I I don't, I I really don't want to complicate it. I I think that the dog would be available to us through our mutual rate agreement. Um, I I I I don't know that I necessarily need or or feel it necessary to add strings, if you will. Um, but um, they they have assured me, because it you just can't, even like with when the dog was with Joanna, if she's on vacation. Parker's not available to us, in which case, we're gonna maybe rely on somebody else that might have a dog. So if you start making conditions, it makes it a little more complicated. And but um, uh, St. Cloud will, assuming, you know, Officer Cameron is not on vacation or whatever. Um, and it can be coordinated and planned. They will make the dog available. And it's it's a trust thing, but it's it's. Um, I would not advocate to kind of put any strings or conditions, um, because quite frankly, they might not be interested.
Kim, I'm getting the hint that they don't like to see them change handlers a lot.
Oh, they don't?
Well, no, I understand that portion.
Making them switch back and forth is probably not a good idea.
No, I I guess that the one thing is, you know, it 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 takes a lot of money to do a canine program. And um, you know, like I say, that's why I was just wondering if there are other maybe smaller towns that would have the ability to take a dog like that, to get that opportunity.
There are several smaller agencies around that are looking to establish a canine, but they're not in a position, they don't have a trained handler. And that that to me was the key, is is the only agency that I could find that had a trained handler that could take over a dog right now was Officer Cameron.
Okay. With the St. Cloud PD, if if we need help, they're available to do that, and that's about the best we can ask for.
Correct. And that just, you know, again, just given our proximity, the fact that we're in the same school district, share them all. I mean, there's good, there's definitely gonna be opportunities for us. To retain um, uh, the services of Parker. If we had a request for a a demo or they they've indicated that. You know, again, assuming Brian's available and, you know, to make the dog available for for demos and those kinds of things, uh, and as those requests come in.
All right.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to sell Parker to the city of St. Cloud for a dollar.
I'd second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, review and approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I do have a card from Okosa. A thank you for the donation from our charitable gambling. A letter from Terabent Refuge, uh, for our dona- thank you for our donation from charitable gambling. And a letter from the St. Cloud Area Fireworks Committee for our donation to the fireworks from charitable gambling. That's all I got. Do you have anything, Shawna or?
I do have one thing um, that I wanted to just uh, let you know, and we had talked about it early on. Um, the Coalition has their summer conference in twenty twenty that they're accepting bids for. The bids are due around the twenty fourth of May. Um, we are working on one jointly with the city of St. Joseph, um, and the CBB um, is actually taking the lead in putting the. Putting the proposal together for us and working with the convention center and the hotels. Um, and so for us, uh, you know, they they need obviously the hotels and the meeting space. Um, there will be multiple tours that they'll have. And right now, we just kind of pitch out ideas and we we can fine tune that if we get selected later. Um, there would be an obligation um, to um, work jointly with St. Joe for uh, the Wednesday night meal. Um, we have our hotel lodging tax that we could utilize that, or we could look to the CBB for assistance on some of that as well. So I just wanted to let you know that um, that we did follow through with that, and St. Joe has been interested too, so a joint application with joint tours that would cover both cities. Um, was something that we were looking at. With the amphitheater uh, being open, we're gonna certainly look at highlighting that as well. So we think it'll be a great opportunity for both cities and hopefully we'll get selected.
All right.
Great.
One other thing too, um, I did learn late last week um, from Judy that um, the ship grant that we uh, put in jointly for the bikes. Uh, the rental bikes um, was approved, and so now we'll get into the details of of what that was. I just found that out out Friday, so. Um, that's exciting to to know that we'll make that available to to the public here soon.
All right.
All right.
Anything else, many council members?
Are we?
Terry, you have anything?
You don't close it.
Uh, John?
Sir.
Chief? Anything? Carla? Paul? We are gonna recess uh, this meeting or and for a closed meeting for an evaluation on our uh.
City administrator.
Administrator. Uh, so I'd I'd ask everyone to leave. We will reopen it just to adjourn afterwards, but uh, so. It'll it'll only take fifteen minutes probably, maybe ten, maybe three, depends on how soon we get, you know.
Could be all night.
Could be all night.
Just for the.